To order February 20, 2024. And we have two items on our agenda this evening. Discussion on possible changes related to the Code of Ethics Policy and Complaint Process and discussion on possible changes related to policies of reasonable, excuse me, reasonable, responsible financial management. First up is Code of Ethics. Who's kicking things off? Might be unreasonable or reasonable? Who's kicking things off? Vice Mayor? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. We had originally got into our meeting this last time intending to include some language that would create a firewall so that the ethics complaints couldn't be filed quite as easily as they were in the past that we had a lot of, well, we all are aware of what's happened in the past. So we were trying to make that process work a little bit better. But in our discussions, we looked at a lot of the information that's already included by the Attorney General in their language. And most of the cities around us have not adopted a Code of Ethics. They just refer all ethics complaints to the Attorney General and let them determine whether or not there's been a violation. So our discussion centered on that. And we ultimately are recommending to the council that we repeal the entire Code of Ethics and just keep the Code of Conduct.
Seriously?
Seriously. I don't know. Chris might have some more to add to it.
Chris, do you have any official language that you'd like to add? Or comments?
Mayor Peterson, Council. That was the discussion. And Vice Mayor Anderson, that was the discussion the Subcommittee had and their recommendation. And obviously wanted to bring it back to the Council for further discussion and potential consideration. One thing to keep in mind is that, you know, the Attorney General's Office in the state has a set of rules that govern all elected and appointed officials. But those rules, like conflicts of interest and public records and open meetings laws, don't cover every component of what could be considered ethical behavior. But the Council did adopt, back when these changes were made, in June. Yeah, and then with an effective date, I think it was 60 days later. If you recall, the Council adopted an ethics handbook as well as a Code of Conduct. And that Code of Conduct contains the same. It's actually much more detailed of what the expectations are for the Council, for Council elected and appointed behavior in the Town of Gilbert. And there is a process under that Code of Conduct for complaints to be filed. It's very limited. They could only be filed by Council members, elected and appointed officials, and staff members. So not as broad as the Ethics Handbook. So from a legal standpoint, the Council, that Code of Conduct is still in place and would still be in place. And that wasn't a recommendation from the Subcommittee to repeal that. If Council did want to consider repealing the Ethics Handbook, you could make some changes into the Code of Conduct to add the penalties that are in the Code of, in the Ethics Handbook. You could move them into the Code of Conduct. So there would be some type of recourse or teeth to enforce the Code of Conduct. If we recall, the Code of Conduct, it sets forth all the expectations that you have. It's, you know, elected officials, appointed officials' conduct with staff members, with residents, with each other. It's all those different categories. And then at the end, it says, hey, if there's been a violation of more than, I think it's three or more violations of any particular Code of Conduct in a six-month period, it reads that a Council member can then file a complaint, or a staff member can as well. And what it does right now is it refers to the Ethics Handbook for actual investigation and then potential discipline. So if the Council did want to consider rescinding the Ethics Handbook, then what you could do is make a change of Code of Conduct and take the investigation and penalty portion and just put it into the Code of Conduct. And that would sit there and still allow the ability of staff members and elected and appointed officials in Gilbert to hold each other accountable for things that aren't violations of state law but are still rising to the level of ethics concerns and the way you're interacting with members of the public or whatever other concerns there are.
Questions? Councilmember Buckley?
So are you saying that the public can? Sorry. Can you hear me now? Yeah. Thank you. So are you saying that a Council member, I mean, a resident can no longer file an ethics complaint? Or? That's one question. I've got a couple.
So to answer that question, if the Ethics Handbook was rescinded, then correct. A resident could not file an ethics complaint against an elected official or appointed official. But what they could do is, under the Code of Conduct, they could go to one of their elected officials and say, this is what happened, and then lobby them to file a complaint on their behalf. Some cities that have ethics codes, very few have very broad where anyone can file for any reason, like Gilbert. A number of cities that do have ethics guidelines in place, they require an ethics code to actually be filed by an elected or appointed official only. So the recourse would be to go to one of you and say, here's what happened. Will you file a complaint on my behalf?
Okay. So that, to me, that doesn't sound like that would go over very well with the public to turn around and say, hey, you no longer can file an ethics complaint. You have to come to a Council member. And we, I think, we've already had that issue where they say, well, you guys protect each other anyway. So my question is, what was so bad in our original ethics documents that we had to change everything? Can we, I mean, it's, I don't know what, and you probably would know more.
I can simply say, the process doesn't work. Period. It doesn't work. Nothing about the process works, including the advice from the Town of Germany, as far as I'm concerned. We haven't, I don't think we've gotten great evaluations from some of the investigators that we've hired. I don't think that the process has worked. Councilmember Torgerson recommended doing a mediator. That came up in the last update. That didn't work. That failed. I mean.
I'm talking about the original one, not the one that we.
Doesn't work.
Neither one of them.
It's barely different. The old one and the new one are barely different. Added in the mediation portion of it, there wasn't much change. And I don't think either process works. And I don't know how to make it better. I would have, I mean, but to rescind the whole thing is going to cause a.
Oh, I think it'll be.
I can't say the word.
A major uproar.
An S-storm. Because I won't say the word with our residents.
Yeah. I don't, they're going to just go ballistic.
Councilmember Torgerson?
The, I believe the point is, is that if there was something that was actually unethical, they're still able to follow with the AG or the county attorney. Am I correct?
Councilmember Torgerson, if it's something that's illegal, yes. But the state laws dealing with what is and what is not illegal when it comes to public officials is different than ethical. So you could do something that's unethical but legal, and the Attorney General's Office or the Mary Cope County Attorney's Office would say, we don't have jurisdiction here because it's an ethical issue, not a legal issue.
I dare say we've not been able to find something unethical the way it's written anyhow. So what the change would be is that it at least creates some bar for legality purposes. But having to have at least someone or two people say, hey, this is worth looking at, it's, what the whole concept of changing was to prevent it from being sport, which it had become sport before that. It just became sport. To not change it leaves it sport and leaves us spending $100,000 for nothing that none of us are satisfied with. No one is satisfied with anything, including the people filing it.
My question is, how do the cities or towns that use the process of going exec session to discuss these items, how do they, how are they able to use the exec session process to go in and decide that? Because even what Councilmember Torgerson just said, if a couple people want to come in and discuss something, I brought an issue to you last year that we couldn't discuss in exec session. I'm just going to use that as an example. How did they get to go? There's an article in today's paper that a Fountain Hills Councilmember has six ethics complaints, and when they get their response from the outside investigator, they're taking it to exec session. How did they get to go and talk about these things in exec session when we haven't found a mechanism to do so?
Mayor, that's something we can look into. I saw that article, and I had the same question. Is, because the exec session statute, as you're aware, has nine exceptions.
Right.
And from our view and from me speaking with other city attorneys, we don't think, the only one that I think could apply is the first one. But it's dealing with promotion, demotion, dismissal of public officials.
Which you can't do.
And in my view, and the other cities that I've talked to, says, with elected officials, you can't, you don't promote, you don't demote, you don't dismiss elected officials, right? You're subject to the citizens and the citizens only. So that's something I will look into because I'm not sure. I don't know if it was misreported or they actually do that.
Yeah, I know the City of Glendale goes into exec session. It can only be, I believe, it can be filed by an elected official, but it has to go through the mayor and they take it to an exec session to discuss.
And I will look into that, and I can get back to you on that.
Any other comments or questions? I mean, I hear the recommendation from the Subcommittee is to just get rid of the whole thing.
Well, not all of it. Code of Conduct stays in.
But get rid of the ethics complaint.
I'm concerned about in the ethics complaints, just the sheer number of them just really bothers me and takes our time away from other things. And the having citizens not be able to, unless they're sponsored by a Council member to bring a complaint, that is going to serve to help us limit the number of those, especially the frivolous ones that are, I don't like what that Council member is wearing tonight. I'm going to file an ethics complaint. Well, that's the example. You know, wearing the wrong thing, so I'm going to file a complaint of some kind. We want to limit those. And they need to be sponsored through a Council member. And the idea that we protect one another, I don't, I don't know.
This group definitely doesn't protect one another, but they do attack each other. And so if it's a fact of bringing it to somebody that will file the ethics complaint, I think that that opens a bigger door.
To that point, though, I think that that person's credibility with the other six members would soon be pretty eroded if it was like, okay, Jim, I need you to file against Bridget today. I need you to file. And all these guys, all right, one after the other, let's go. And it's pretty soon everybody's going to look, Jim, what are you, an idiot? And it's going to be like, well, yeah, I'm an idiot because I filed, you know, 12 ethics complaints for no good reason. I think that nobody would be willing to attack a sitting person without something worthwhile. I mean, as you're looking at each other, you got to sit next to each other at some point. You have to go, that's not really rising to the level of that. And I just don't think that it would, I think that would at least create a barrier to entry because we have none right now. Literally tonight, somebody could file Bridget was not wearing orange. And it could just, boom, the way we've got it goes right up, and we go spend $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 on it.
Councilmember Bonjivani?
Thank you, Mayor. I see what we're trying to do. So what if rather than having someone approach one Council member, have it where they have to approach three and only three and see if they can get those three to buy in on the issue? If they go to a fourth, they're done. Because then they would have to prove their point or show their concern to three out of three and get all three of them to say, you know what, that's something worth looking into.
Councilmember Buckley, follow up?
Yeah. I don't really like that particular scenario, mostly because we're, I don't like this three and three thing anyway, myself. And we've already had some issues with that because we just have. And I can see somebody picking, who would pick the three people? And maybe a resident knows that three people support them, so they're going to say, I want to have something with these three. I just don't, you know, and it's a great suggestion, but I just don't think that'll work.
Councilmember Kapowski?
And I would just add that while on Council, we may be bound by the limit of three, a citizen has the right to reach out to each of us. And so I think it would be up to them to reach out to as many of us as they want to explain the situation, and one or more of us could determine whether we want to move forward with action. And in the end, even if one or more wanted to move forward with action, in order to expend a certain level of funding to move into investigation, I believe we would have to go into a vote where at least four of us would vote to move forward. Do you agree with that process? That that would be what would happen?
Mayor Peterson? Councilmember Tilke is also online.
I was literally just going to ask you that a second ago. Councilmember Tilke, do you have any comments on this?
I do. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, boy, can we hear you.
Oh, good.
We need to turn it down just a little.
Okay, sorry. I thought, because I can hear Chris perfectly, and I only hear about half of what you guys are saying. So anyway, I just wanted to share a little insight of kind of how we got here and why we're recommending this. You know, the initial ethics policy really was brought forward many years ago to try to regulate some questionable behavior on Council. And I think it really, if you dug down deep enough, it was open meeting law violations and sharing some confidential information. And so they wanted to make sure that we had this ethical standard for our Council over time. What we've seen in the last three, three and a half years, at least since I've been on Council, that this mechanism is being used to try to change behavior that doesn't rise to the level of what you would classify as ethical violations. And I think because of that, we have spent a lot of money investigating them. And when the investigation comes back, because they are literally looking at the legal definition and what the behavior was, and we're coming back with results that nobody's been happy with. The person who complained, the person who was complained against. And that's what elevated this to where we wanted to look at, what could we do to make sure that people were heard and that they felt that if they had a complaint against a Council member, they would be able to share that and know that action was going to be taken. Now, I will tell you that we spent an exhaustive amount of time. Chris is tired, Chris and Chevelli are tired of seeing me on this because we went through it line by line, trying to figure out, how could we address a citizen's concern without spending tens of thousands of dollars on investigations? And what, even what we heard from you on the dais when we looked at it was, a lot of this could be handled if we could get people in the room and talk and see if we could at least solve that before it went to an investigation. So that was the new process. We've had one allegation go through the entire process, and what we found, again, that there wasn't a willingness to solve it at that one-on-one, or they weren't in the same room, but during mediation, and we had to pay for the investigation anyway. Again, it came back, and nobody on the dais was happy with the results of it because we are, it's very clear that they're only judging it against the ethics violation. When we did the update on the ethics policy, we, in tandem, created the Code of Conduct and expanded that to include steps that would still allow, outside of this ethics complaint, as Chris mentioned very clearly, there is a whole list of the way that a Council member or commissioner should behave. There is an avenue that if somebody is, I'll just say, misbehaving, then they, if a resident complained to a Council member or a Council member or a staff member contacted Patrick, that Council member is brought in with the mayor or the vice mayor, and they sit down, they talk about that behavior, and they try to make corrections from the get-go. In the Code of Conduct, and Chris, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's the third time that you are, somebody complains about the same behavior within a certain amount of time. That triggers this coming to the Council to be investigated, just like an ethics complaint. So what we're doing here is we are trying to get to the root of the problem, understand that there is a behavioral issue that could get to the ethics level. We try to correct behavior. And if it isn't corrected, then it comes to the Council. It's very public. Again, the Council will make a decision whether it needs to go out into investigation, if there's penalties. All of that can be completed under the Code of Conduct. I'm going to put a caveat there because I know Chris is going to jump in, that we would have to, if we revoked the ethics policy as is today, those penalties and that next step to the investigation needs to move over into the Code of Conduct because right now we refer to the ethics policy. So I understand the concern that the public may think that we're taking away an opportunity. But what we found is a lot of these were frivolous. They may not have been frivolous in the mind of the person who was upset, but they were frivolous at the end of the day when we compared their complaint to the actual ethics policy. And what we're trying to do is correct behavior and do it in such a way that we're not spending tens and thousands of dollars before we have an opportunity to correct the behavior. So with that, I'll be quiet and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions that you might have? And please speak into the mic so that Councilmember Tilke can hear you. Councilmember Buckley?
So I have a question in regards to the town paying the attorney fees for the person filing the ethics complaint. Is there a way that we can, do we have to? Are we?
We have to.
Okay, so we're obligated to pay their attorney fees? There's no getting out of that?
It's our process. I think it's because it's our process that they're following, that we are responsible to pay for those fees, and we wouldn't be able to go back and ask for them. We can't do that in litigation either and go back and ask for those fees. Am I correct on that?
Yes, I mean, we could build in something saying that they're responsible, but I think it would be a pretty high bar for anyone. And the difficulty would be enforcing that. If we're selecting the outside investigator and someone refuses to pay, we still have to pay the bill. And then there'd be collections issues. It'd be really difficult to enforce if we did do that.
Yeah, I just thought, sometimes when people know they have no obligation for filing something, they can just file it, and they don't have to hire an attorney. They don't have to do anything other than show up and see the town's attorney.
And to that point, Councilmember Buckley, a couple of things. One, to just to reiterate what Councilmember Tilke talked about, is the current Code of Conduct says that a staff member or Council member could file a Code of Conduct complaint. And if it's more than two instances of the same bad behavior within 180 days, right now it then converts into a Code of Ethics process, and that could be changed to make it a Code of Conduct process where there's an investigation and the potential penalties. And then to the point that you just made, Councilmember Buckley, in litigation, we use mediation a lot, and it's often successful. But the point that you just made, a successful mediation requires two parties who are willing to compromise. And even if they're not going to get all they want, and typically in mediation, and sometimes it's voluntary mediation, and sometimes it's court ordered, that both parties have some type of skin in the game. If you're the plaintiff and say you're suing the town because you got hit by a town vehicle, and you're asking for money for damages, you would like that case to settle because there's risk if you go forward. You go to a jury, you may not win. And even if you go to jury and win, that may be two years from now. So the plaintiff may be looking at a mediation saying, well, I'm willing to take less in settlement than what I think the claim is worth because money in hand today is worth something. So they have something in the game, some risk, if they don't settle in a mediation. And the same thing for the town as the defendant, we have risk. We think we may have a very good legal position. We may think that the plaintiff's claim is just too broad, but there's cost of defense concerns, there's the risk of the jury. So the town, you know, has some type of desire. And if you can, you know, good mediation, you'll come to terms and maybe meet somewhere on that scale. But it takes two parties being willing to do so. Two parties have to have skin in the game, my experience to have a mediation that's successful.
I agree with you on that, yeah.
Any other comments? So we'll need to know how to advise staff to move forward if you would like to repeal the Code of Ethics but leave the Code of Conduct. We would need to put that on a future agenda. Oh, it's on tonight. That's right, I got it. Yeah, I was surprised that it was added as an addendum to tonight's agenda because we were going to be discussing this now. I'm not sure that.
So Mayor, just to clarify, if that's the direction the Council wants to go, it could be rescinded tonight. But then the Ethics Handbook, then we would come back with proposed revisions to the Code of Conduct to take the penalties and investigation portion and build that into the Code of Conduct. So you could do it tonight. You could push off if that's where Council wanted to go or not make any changes or make other changes.
Thank you. I completely forgot that that was an addendum. Vice Mayor, do you have a comment?
What we're basically doing, and tell me if I'm wrong, Chris, is taking two processes that could become confusing, which one you're going to follow depending on who you are, putting it into one handbook, basically, or one code, and rolling in those same penalties. So everything's included in the Code of Conduct that we would have had in the Ethics Handbook anyway.
And Vice Mayor, to that point, as I talked about earlier, the Code of Conduct that the Council adopted is more specific with regard to expected behavior than the Ethics Handbook. The Ethics Handbook has some four categories that are broad, you know, loyalty and that kind of stuff. The Ethics or the Code of Conduct, and I'll just read these sections, it's got general duties, which covers the same ethical requirements in the Ethics Handbook, but then it gets more specific. Elected and appointed public officials' conduct with each other, your conduct with town staff, your conduct with the public, your conduct with public agencies, the town council conduct with members of boards, commissions, and committees. And then elected and appointed officials' conduct with the media. So it gets much more specific than the Ethics Handbook does.
Councilmember Kapowski?
Chris, are you ready to present the Code of Conduct to us this evening in a presentation that would be better understood by the public that may be watching?
Let me confer with Chevelli. We just need to make sure that what's been noticed would allow that discussion.
That's exactly what I just read, and it says, consideration, discussion, and possible action on revision, amendment, or repeal of the Ethics Handbook and/or the Code of Conduct.
Got it. So thank you.
It's covered.
I didn't have that in front of me. So to that point, yes, we could talk about how they're duplicative and how the ethical requirements for our elected and appointed officials in the Ethics Handbook, they're covered in the Code of Conduct. We can talk about that. What the Council, I would not recommend making those changes to the Code of Conduct tonight if that's what the Council wants to do is rescind, just because it's, there's going to be five or six paragraphs, and that's hard to do from the dais. We want to make sure we get that right. So if the Council's ultimate decision was to move forward, then we would bring the Code of Conduct, the changes, to a future date. But we could have that discussion, and I could work between now and then to get that ready.
Yes, I think in order to discuss this item tonight, I would ask that there would be some information presented regarding the overlap and what is in the Code of Conduct that we would be keeping. I think that's important in the decision-making process. And then discussion of what might be added to that Code of Conduct if the Ethics Handbook was repealed. Thank you.
Councilmember Buckley?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Kapowski. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Kapowski. I'm sorry. But I agree with what she says. I would, and that was going to be my question, I would like to see something and like to know before making any decision, big decision right now. I still have grave concerns that the public is not going to quite understand this and think that we just took away their right to make a complaint. And they don't want, I don't think, and I don't know, you can, Mayor, you can correct me on this, but I don't think that the public wants to even deal with us. They want to deal with an outside person, whether it be a mediator, an attorney, or whatever. I don't know. But I agree that I need more information on this to really feel like I can make an informed decision.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think that I would need some more information. I have to digest this before I would even want to vote on this tonight, my opinion. I think that, I was kind of surprised that it was an addendum and then I forgot about it, because we were doing this as a study session tonight. I thought that we would need more time to evaluate, discuss, or comprehend what exactly we're looking at by making this change. I think it's a big change to make and I think there's going to be an uproar. And I think making it as an addendum at the last second might not go over so well.
Vice Mayor?
That's probably not a bad idea because the subcommittee, we had the chance to kind of study this and see how it works and digest it. And that's why we're comfortable with it. And you all need that same opportunity, so I think it's a good way to go.
I also think that I'd like to hear what the other cities are doing and if they really are using exact session, how are they doing it? Is it something that, is there something that we're missing in this process? And is there another option before we just go ahead and get rid of it? So we could always just table it tonight if that's what comes up later, but...
And that's my question for direction from the council is if you want to push this or at least have further discussion and consideration, then maybe speaking about it tonight isn't the right time. I could certainly put something together if the council would like, or we could do that additional research that we talked about. Just let us know what that direction is.
Yeah. Yes, Councilmember Kapowski?
Mayor, I would propose that the item that's listed on tonight's agenda, item 21, this isn't an action, but that we end up postponing it to a later date, but that we need to decide what that later date may be. And I would personally, if we are going to move it to that later date, I would be happy to give staff time to propose the revisions to the code of conduct so that we can digest that at the same time and repeal the ethics handbook while we also adopt the revised code of conduct at the same time versus having them be separate actions.
Yeah, thank you. I think that that's probably a great idea. If we table something, I think you were at Student Government Day the other day when I explained this, if we table something, it's not, we don't have to set a date certain. If we continue something, then we can set a date certain. We only have one meeting in March, I believe, so we could even just continue it to our first meeting in April. That gives the whole month of March. Chris, are you going on like a three-week vacation for spring break or anything? I'm just kidding.
No, I wish, but no.
Then we could, that would be a possibility for tonight.
So one question I have as well is would the council want to bring it back at a council meeting or an additional study session?
I think if it's, you want to just do a council meeting? Yeah, I think I'm comfortable with a council meeting if we get it ahead of time so that we can take a look at it and then have time to ask you questions. So even in, you know, a week ahead of time, like we do our normal packets, that would be fine for me.
And since I wasn't on the subcommittee, I might ask just for a separate meeting prior to the council meeting with staff and any other council member that wants to join me under the limit, just to review those changes so that we fully understand those.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, that's a possibility too. Small groups with you or Chevelli or you and Chevelli to cover the changes before the council meeting. Small groups work. Sorry.
No, I would like the same thing because I, before it comes through.
Well, and like Vice Mayor just said, we weren't on the subcommittee, so we didn't have the opportunity to listen to all of this and make these decisions and be comfortable with it. So, yeah. Great. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for the work on the subcommittee. Now we just have one more item. It is Rob Bors headed to the podium for discussion on possible changes related to policies of responsible financial management. I thought he felt lonely out in the, out in right field over there by himself, my right field.
Hello, thanks, Mayor. Mayor and council, good evening. Rob Bors, Intergovernmental Relations Director. Probably be a conversation that's a little bit familiar to you as we look at the council support costs section of the financial policies document. So if you'll remember, back in September, actually, you, this was brought to you in a council meeting, the entire financial policies document. You approved the majority of it, however, held off on the council support costs section for further discussion. And you did have further discussion at the November retreat and since then have shared additional feedback by email as we've shared revisions with you. So we have made further revisions to this document. So tonight, I know I shared the full document with you. Tonight, we're going to focus on those council support costs, which is really the piece of this that you haven't yet approved. That then will be coming back to you at the Tuesday, March 5th council meeting for approval, assuming that the discussion, everything's good with the discussion tonight and we're ready to move forward. So thank you for your feedback and helping out with those revisions as well. And then finally, just, you know, before I start going through the policies here, just kind of want to explain the presentation. I did include the full language from each of the six policies on the slides, really just as a benefit for the public who might be watching as we kind of pick the highlights or maybe touch on a piece of these so that they kind of know that full policy that we're referring to. But we will, or I will, tend to just kind of focus on some of the key points with each one. And then, you know, as far as our role as staff, you know, really just here to kind of guide your discussion. This is your guys' direction as far as what these policies should include. So, you know, we'll help guide through the conversation and then help answer any questions that you might have or clarify any of the information. So just as a refresher, the six pieces of the council support costs that are part of the policies include employee benefits, transportation support, communication support, expenditure reimbursement and purchasing cards, travel, training, memberships, and should say, I'm sorry, community events, and then office space. So first off, some of these I think are going to be pretty straightforward and probably not require a lot of discussion. The first one is related to employee benefits. And the policy simply states that you as mayor and council are able to enroll in the town health and dental benefit programs. And you're also covered, excuse me, you're also covered by the workers' compensation program for work-related injuries. But then, of course, you're not eligible for vacation, sick leave, holiday pay, or other compensation. Transportation support, one that's been discussed a little bit more in previous meetings. But this really is laying out the two choices that you have for business-related travel and reimbursement for that travel. As you know, the first choice is to receive a monthly travel stipend based on 300 miles of transfer at the IRS rate for council or 600 miles at the IRS rate for mayor. And then the second choice would just be to submit logs of your mileage, actual mileage traveled for business-related travel, and then get reimbursed based on that mileage. And this one does have a second slide. This chart was actually included in the financial policy document that was shared with you. This is related to, one thing we wanted to touch on was, okay, if you are receiving that mileage reimbursement, how does that work with pool vehicles that may be available? Because, you know, it might not make sense for you to be receiving that reimbursement and then using a town-owned vehicle as well. So this chart provides kind of that guidance that you can use and we can also use as staff in giving you advice as far as when a pool vehicle can or cannot be used. So I guess before I move off to transportation, I can stop and just see if there's any discussion or questions at this point.
I was just going to ask that, Rob. Do you want to just go slide by slide, basically, or topic by topic? Councilmember Bonjivani?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Rob. Mileage reimbursement for travel outside of Phoenix Metro, does that start the mile you leave Phoenix Metro?
You know, oh, here comes Hocken. I was going to say maybe he might be able to come. I know we have defined that, so he can clarify.
Thank you, councilmember. It would be for destinations outside. So if the destination were Tucson for a conference, it would be the entire trip from the closer of Muni One or your residence to your destination. So that's the intent.
Thank you.
I didn't even know that rule existed until we had this discussion recently. The only thing that I brought up when we talked about this at a retreat was I thought 600 miles and 300 miles is a lot considering we're allowed to do a lot of these meetings virtually now. I know that I don't put 600 miles on my vehicle and I didn't know if anybody was interested in lowering that amount because I would go with 500 for mayor and 250 for council members, but I don't know if anybody is. Councilmember Bonjivani?
I get lost a lot, so.
You get lost? So you drive extra miles?
Yeah.
And the taxpayer pays for that?
Yeah. Well, some of us...
Councilmember Buckley, can you speak into your microphone, please? Sorry.
Sorry. Oh, okay.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Anyway, some of us live, don't live, like right in the north part of Gilbert where it's close, you know, to get to Town Hall. Like Chuck and I both live in South Gilbert and for me, it takes me about 20 minutes or longer to get here. Mileage, I mean, you know, the mileage is still a lot more than driving, you know, four miles to get to Town Hall. So I frankly probably drive more than 300 miles because of going back and forth. And sometimes I have meetings and then I have another meeting until, you know, four o'clock. So I'm either going to have to stay here or I, you know, go home and work both my jobs at home until I have to come back. So there are days that, you know, I do that two or three times a day. I don't know about Chuck, but yeah, I think he probably does the same thing. So I personally would not want to change that.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor and council, thank you. Moving on, so the next one, I think another one that should be pretty straightforward here, but this relates to communication support within the office. This really touches on what technology equipment and other tools you're provided when you take office in order to assist you with the roles and responsibilities. So of course, you all receive the standard town laptop and as well loaded with all the software that you need for the different business that you conduct. And of course, a town-owned cell phone with access to email, to town email as well as to voicemail. And a voicemail account, obviously, that can be managed by yourself. So...
Speaking of managing by ourselves, has everybody set up their voicemail? Because I know I've called a couple of council members and they didn't have their voicemail set up. And it would be helpful if you actually set up your voicemail so that people can leave you messages. Thank you. Public service announcement.
Moving on, Mayor and council. So the next one's related to expenditure reimbursement and/or purchasing card. Again, pretty clear here, an elected official is able to obtain a procurement card for public business, but more often we tend to do the second option, which is directly reimbursing elected officials for any expenditures related to public business upon written request. So any questions there before we move along? Mayor and council?
Vice Mayor?
I had asked a question previously and I assume we got that straightened out. My purchasing card that I had a couple of years ago was taken away, saying we don't get them anymore. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, I'm not sure exactly the situation there, but let us kind of do, oh, here comes Hocken behind me again. I'll let him take care of that.
Thank you. Yes, there were some confusion as to exactly how that was supposed to be operating and, you know, behind the scenes. This clarifies that and councilmembers are allowed to receive a purchasing card. They'll be asked to sign the agreement that kind of demonstrates the rules and what's required to keep receipts and just those reminders that the purchasing cards are to be used for things that are budgeted for and that you also have support staff that might be useful to not need a purchasing card and have purchases go through them. But that option is available and it's just, this clarifies that. We apologize for our past interactions, councilmember.
I just want Monica to be able to charge up the card.
Any other questions with that one, Mayor?
Seeing none, no.
All right, the last one, not the last one, but the other one that's had some discussion behind it. So this is related to travel, training, membership, and community events. Lot of language here, and this is the first of two slides, but really this is kind of setting parameters for the use of what will be your individual budget line item for employee professional development. It's intended to include things like conference attendance, trainings, or other community-related expenses. So we are moving toward kind of establishing these more individual budget line items. I did, we did not specify within this document the amounts of each and the reason for that being that, you know, that could change year to year with the budget process. But I will tell you, since the timing kind of works out well with this discussion coming right, as you're about to get into the public discussions related to budget development, I will tell you that we're recommending for the next year's budget, $6,000 for each of the employee development funds for council and then $12,000 for the mayor's fund. So this, again, this slide here really sets kind of some of the parameters related to those expenses and what types of expenses you would expect to incur. Obviously, the Arizona Constitution provides for the gift clause that is intended to prohibit donation of public funds. So in other words, anytime an expense is made, there should be a proportionate value received back from the town. So obviously, a key thing to keep in mind anytime an expense is incurred. But then really kind of getting more into the parameters around the intended expenses from this account. As I mentioned, you know, trainings and conferences is going to be a very common expense that would come from these individual accounts. So again, this second slide kind of tries to lay out some of the logistics and things to keep in mind or guidelines related to those types of conferences or trainings or those types of things that you will attend and some of the, just requirements that we want to keep in mind and that we will, for example, that this would include costs such as registration fees, travel costs, and food. You know, if we're going down to Tucson for the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference, obviously that requires a place to stay, requires food when there isn't a meal provided by the conference itself and that sort of thing. And then we also include other expenses. So, you know, this fund would also be able to be used for community-related expenses that you see as a value to the community. And I guess that's probably one of the most important key points to make with these expenses and with this council policy in itself that we made in the previous slide. And that's that it's really each, up to each of you to kind of determine what that community benefit is. And then it's really up to each of you to justify that if the question comes up as far as any expense that was made from this account, to then justify how you see that as being a proportionate community benefit that came from that expense. So Mayor, I will go ahead and stop there. I'm assuming maybe there might be some questions or discussion with this one before we get to the last policy.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I know that when we talked about this at the retreat, there was some discussion... I know that when we talked about this at the retreat, there was some discussion. Councilmember Torgerson?
I just wondered, is this end, or does it roll over into the next year?
So the, Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, the intention would be, this would be an annual budget amount. So we would set that again in the following year's budget, as far as what amount would be budgeted to each of you. You know, I, so obviously, unused funds would, you know, be returned back, but I think the intention would be that each year, there would be a new and separate allocation.
Because each year, the amount could change for the budget, too, so based on the budget discussions, it could go from $6,000 up. I think it's a lot, and it's a big jump. We're probably around $23,000 or $24,000 right now, we'll be going up to about $48,000 if my math is correct. It's basic math, I'm good at that one. So that's a big jump for what the council would be allowed to spend from my perspective. And how it's going to be spent is something that I'm going to be leery about, because that's, it's going to be an interesting conversation, I think, as to how that money gets spent. And did you talk about guests? Because I know one question that we had was guests, and I think we may have removed it, but people are able to bring guests, but it would always be at the guest's costs. So if you want to bring a guest to an event, there will, obviously, if your guest comes to the conference and you have a hotel room, they're going to stay in your hotel room, and there's no cost there, right? It just kind of goes without saying. But if there's a cost for that guest to be at a dinner or something else, that would be at the guest's cost to attend, because the town shouldn't be, just to make that clear. And I hope that there's a way that we can keep track of this, because I know it does say that the money would be going back into your fund if you were not attending an event, and I don't know if it's on this slide or not, there's a lot of words on this slide, or if it's on the next slide, but making sure that we're keeping track of that, and we'll have to have some kind of a process or policy in place so that Monica and Kirsten know how to deal with that when it's coming out of the budget money.
Mayor, yes, that is on this slide. It's on kind of the bottom bullet point there, the first section. But yeah, the intention with that would be if, you know, if there's a $600 registration fee to attend a conference somewhere, and there's a time period where we're no longer able to get a refund for that fee, and then somebody determines they're unable to attend, that obviously, we wouldn't expect that to come out of anyone's personal budget, if, you know, if there's a good reason that somebody is no longer able to attend. But that cancellation fee, if it is not able to be refunded, which of course, we would try first, would then come out of this budget for that individual mayor or council member.
Thank you. I think that's important, too, because it shouldn't be just coming out of the, all of the council funds either. It needs to be allocated to that specific person, especially if we are going to move to this form of each council member gets a certain amount every single year out of the budget. Thank you. There will have to be some sort of a process in place for that, and so that Monica and Kirsten, like I said, know how to handle that, too.
Yeah, Mayor, and that's, gives an opportunity to provide a kind of an additional point here. You know, we didn't want to get down to every single detail within this document, and we will have to kind of determine our own internal policies for guiding us along in some of this. But, you know, this is really intended to be more of a guiding framework and not get into kind of every possible scenario, but maybe have our own kind of internal office guidelines that we can, you know, refine easier over time and make sure that we're doing the best job of kind of guiding you with these expenses over time.
It comes in handy for training new council members, too. You're going to have two new council members next year, for sure. And so it comes in handy for training and the purpose of understanding what's allowed and what's not. And I hope we can put a process in place for when we're invited to events and RSVP-ing for those events, and attending and not attending, and just so that Monica and Kirsten, again, have an easy way to handle those things. This weekend, I know we had an event that nobody from Gilbert was at, which just, you know, stabs me in the heart. I was at two events over the weekend and couldn't be at all three. And so I would love to find a process for being able to handle those things so that we know that somebody from Gilbert will be there when it's something that's important to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
PSA from Bridget, again.
Well, Mayor, that just leaves us with one additional policy, and I think another one that's pretty straightforward and simple. This is just related to office space. Obviously, each of you are provided shared space, but, and also a shared office, including the necessary resources for you to conduct business, and that each of you are, or we have staff that supports each of you in your roles as well in the Intergovernmental Relations Office. So Mayor and Council, that concludes the six Council Support Costs of the financial policies, unless there was any other discussion or questions or information we can provide.
Thank you. I don't, does anyone have any questions or comments for Rob? One other thing that was done was the document was all cleaned up so that it refers to Gilbert elected officials consistently throughout the document. It seemed like we were being called a couple of different things, so it makes it cleaner for the future. Some of these documents haven't been updated for many, many, many years, so it was an opportunity to take advantage of that, too. Seeing none, Rob. We'll see, yes, Councilmember Kapalski. Sorry, I didn't see you turn your mic on.
I just have one comment. Thank you, Rob, for this. I support all the changes. Just wanted to make a note that regarding the fund for council to attend different conferences, et cetera, that to make sure that the council is aware that on our annual financial disclosure, we have to disclose those expenses and like the travel expenses that were paid for that. And so I guess just for staff to make sure that you provide us with a summary, or that we have to have a summary for our financial disclosure report each year.
And it is $1,000 or more. So sometimes the state conference, if you're just going to the conference and not having a room, it's less than $1,000. But anything $1,000 or more, then it becomes an issue. I just pay for my own room most of the time, unless it's down in Tucson. But great point. Thank you, and great reminder.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Kapalski, that's helpful. We'll make sure and consider that information.
Another internal process that would be helpful to the council. Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we, I will adjourn this meeting. We have an Exec Section to get to. Thanks. Thanks, Rob.